Okay, it's 6:00 PM and time for us to start our meeting. I will call the July meeting of the Mayor and Council to order. We'll have our pledge of allegiance, please, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing for our invocation, I'd like to ask our Councilmember Bridges to have our invocation, please.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you for allowing us to get up this morning in our right minds, in our healthy strength, Lord God. Lord God, we ask that you come and grace your presence in this meeting this evening to honor what you want us to do as unity in our community, Lord God. That you would touch every person that is in this room, dear heavenly Father, that you would allow them to understand all things that come through you and not through us, Lord God. Lord, as we go forth through this evening, to finish this meeting, we ask that you bless it with your grace in the mighty name of Jesus, and let every heart say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Bridges. Before we have our citizens' comments today, I want to read you something. We have, in the last year, changed some things. We changed our citizens' comments to be only three minutes per person, and today, this, well, actually July 1st started our new physical year here, and it also makes a lot of time when our policies change. So I'm going to read to you what our public comment policy is going to be for the next year. Citizens' comments are an opportunity for citizens of the city of Carrollton to address the Mayor and Council with any issue or concern they may have. All remarks should be directed to the mayor and not to individual council members, staff, or citizens in attendance. Citizens shall make no inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates these rules of decorum will be asked to leave the council chambers. We have dedicated 30 minutes for our citizen comments, and citizens are allowed to speak for three minutes each. To qualify for registering for a citizen comment slot, you must be a resident of the city of Carrollton, a licensed business owner in the city of Carrollton. To obtain three-minute citizen's comment slot at the next Mayor and Council meeting, please register in the city, the office of the City of the Deputy Clerk by 5:00 PM on Monday before the next Mayor and Council meeting, and that's one week prior. And then the contact information, and you'll see it on the screen, is Ms. Haley Beaver, and the number is 770-830-2000, extension 2202, or at HBever@carrollton-ga-govern. Please be advised that we want to have an opportunity to research and consider your comments. We will not be able to respond to your inquiry during the public comments, public comment segment of the meeting. However, we will use your contact information that you provided when you registered to someone will be in contact with you properly. And the reason we're doing this is that so if there is an issue that we need to get resolved, you know, sometimes we can resolve it before you have to come to the Mayor and Council meeting. But please note, this is not the time for comments on zoning matters, which will occur during public hearings later in the meeting. As you come to the podium, please state your name and address, and I will appreciate it greatly if everybody will adhere to these, and this will be our public policy, comment policy for our next year. So at this time, our citizens' comments, and we have Mr. Jim Triplet, our city clerk, who will call your name, and he's also the timekeeper for the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to ask Brandalyn Marinko, 1332 Horsley Mill Road, to approach the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor Kason. I was not aware of your policy that you were stating this evening. I am not a resident of the city of Carrollton. Neither am I a business owner in the city of Carrollton, so I will respectfully defer to my counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask Kiwana McMichael Brown to approach the podium. 408 Tanner Street.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor Kason. My name is Kiwana McMichael. I'm going to try to be brief because I did think that my client would be able to speak, but we'll just get to the meat and bones of it. On July 4th, at the Carrollton Sound of Liberty fireworks incident occurred with her 17-year-old son, Mr. Jorge Marinko. He's also here. The reason why, and there's a lot of contradictions in the accounts of what happened, but what we do know is that Mr. Marinko is now charged with the crime of obstruction for filling to give his name. Additionally, he was, force was used, use of force was used, and based on the video that is circulating online, as well as witness accounts, and I would like to be clear, my son was there as well with Mr. Marinko playing with fireworks at the fireworks when the officers questioned, for whatever reason, not my son, but Mr. Marinko and another son, and use of force was used. We're here because, and there is letters that we will be presenting to the mayor and to Chief Richards and citizens are bringing because of three things: answers, transparency, and accountability. The mother, I've arranged for the mother to go to meet at the sheriff's office. She did meet with some officers. There is substantial body camera not available. All the contradictions and all the hyperbole and all the scrutiny could be gone if body cameras were worn during this festivities. Whether it exists or whether it doesn't exist is a problem. If it does not exist, we need to know why. At such a populated event, officers did not have body cameras. If it does exist, we need to know why the mother wasn't able to see it. It was a very disturbing scene. Her son is sick, has just came off a car accident, and he was slammed to the ground in front of her face for no reason that she can come up with, and as a criminal defense attorney and a local business owner, no reason I can come up with it. And I would like to say that this is not, this is becoming a trend in my office. I've been working here for three years. I practice exclusively criminal defense, and for the better part of this day, I've had more mothers contact me. And so this is something we want the council to look into. We elected you to be a chosen parent of our community. We look at each of you as a parent. So if it was your child, what would you do? What answers would you want? What type of transparency would you want? What kind of penalty would you want? That's what Ms. Marinko wants for her child, and that's what the citizens of Carrollton elected you to do. So that's what we're asking for you today and to look, move forward, and we will, as citizens, do our civic duty to ensure that those answers happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask Dwayne Hicks, 800 Ring Road, a local business person, to approach the podium, please.
Good evening, Council. I inadvertently signed up for public comments. I'm here to speak on behalf of item number two, so I'll just defer any comments I have in representation of the owner until we get to item number two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This time, I would like to ask Jerry North, 634 North Acox Street, Carrollton, to approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Jerry North. I reside at 634 North Acox Street here in Carrollton. Mayor, Councilman, I was in here approximately two years ago complaining about the traffic on Acox Street. They installed, the city captain installed two slow signs, but they are not doing any good, and the speeding has gotten worse. So I got a petition signed from 95% of the residents that live between Acox Street and Genie Die Drive, requesting that we have three speed breakers put between Acox Street, I meant between Burson Avenue and Genie Die Drive. We could have used four if possible, so that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from our prior meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt these minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. At this time, we'll have comments from our Mayor and Council members. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
I would just like to say, I'm glad to be a part of this team, and I want best, what's best for our community, and that's what makes our community great, being a diverse community. And I pray for unity, respect, and love in this community. I want to talk more, but I had death in my family, and I ask the Mayor and Council and the community to pray for my family, and, and thank you.
Councilman Nugent.
Thank you, Jacqueline, and wise words there, and deepest condolences on your cousin. July, I believe, is known as Loyalty Month, and our city celebrated it with thousands and thousands of people over this past weekend. I'd like to say thank you to Terry Lowry and all the folks that made it such a great event for most people, and that we can continue to do this. We had music performances at least three nights in a row with the jazz band and another band, I forgot the name of that one, plus the entire symphony at the fireworks program, and I just, I'm thankful that we could do that this year. We missed that fun occasion last year. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Ledbetter.
Yeah, I agree, Bob. My wife and I attended every event that Carrollton put on during the Fourth of July weekend, and we had a great time, and I was highly impressed with all of it. So I hope all of you had a chance to enjoy at least a part of it. Thank you.
Councilman Waters.
Tommy Holland's not here. I don't, I don't see him, but just, I've mentioned Bankhead before, and I believe it's, if it's not done, it's 99% done, and I'm just real proud of the work that his, his engineering team and anyone else involved in that project has done, because I have heard lots of very positive comments about it, which is nice. That's all, Betty. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the staff that has worked really hard to open our city back up in the summer. We've attended two of the AMP events of movies. Unfortunately, last Friday night, we were precluded from seeing all of Monster University. I was kind of disappointed, but, you know, maybe God had a reason for thunderstorm and lightning during our, our movie. A lot of the little children were disappointed, but we plan to do it again this Friday night, so hopefully the weather will be a little more conducive. And, you know, it takes a lot of work to bring this to our citizens, and I really do appreciate what the staff does, and I want to express on behalf of all of us to Councilman Bridges, condolence to, for her, for the loss of her family. The other great news we have is this Wednesday, our police officer that was injured, seriously injured, in an incident that occurred back in April, will be coming home. Will be coming to Carrollton. We plan to have an event, and if you, where you can join us up on the square, and the planned arrival time is around 11:00, I think, to, he'll be leaving Shepherd's and get to come home for a little reprieve, and then, of course, he'll be going back to Shepherd's, but at least he's going to get to have a few days at home before he does that. So if you're where you can, come out and help us celebrate and see a miracle of God, because it is definitely a miracle that this young officer is, is alive, and we just appreciate the community and what they've done for him, and our police officers and other law enforcement people that have made his house conducive to him being able to get in and out and things that needed to be done. The community's really stepped up, and we appreciate that. Also, I would like to recognize at this time our newest member of the city of Carrollton employee, Mr. David Brooks, who came on board with us as Assistant City Manager, and you'll be hearing from him later. And I would also like to recognize a University of West Georgia student, if she would stand. She has been following me around for the last, what, month and a half, about, yeah, to find out what the mayor actually does, and I think she's found out it's more than just sitting here at the council meeting. But anyway, we, we just wish you the best, and she is a journalist, communications. And she is a journalist, communications major at the university. And she does the campus radio station and does newscast. And her, her desire is to become one of those newscasters that we watch on TV all the time. So we, we wish her the best. Other than that, I think that pretty well covers what we've done since the last meeting. So at this time, Mr. Grizzard, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just real quickly. Ditto what Jim said about Bankhead, it's absolutely beautiful. And I say a lot around here that I've never done a road project where anybody was happy until it was over. They always hate it. They always say it won't work. They always say it's a waste of money, and then when it's over, they love it. And Bankhead's the same way. So we're very proud of that, and a lot of people, including a committee of citizens, about 13 citizens worked over a year on that design, but it's just turned out beautifully, and I think it does a lot for that area. The traffic works just very smoothly. So there was a lot of speculation and complaints about what the lane reduction would do, but it works very well. Again, welcome, David. He has hit the ground running. I know a lot of y'all know him from the school system, and I can tell, he's only been here a week, and I can already tell he's going to do a great job. And then the budget vote is tonight. I know the hearing was last month and presented, but I'm so proud of these department heads and so proud of these employees. With the adjustments you're going to make with the amendments tonight, the budget that you will vote on will actually be a decrease from last year, about a .4% decrease. So we're very proud of that. That's hard work and attention to detail, and these people do a great job. And I just want to make sure that the public knows that. Thank you.
If you hadn't had a chance to drive down Bankhead after dark, do. It is simply beautiful. I mean, just the lighting and all this, and once the, all the landscape has a chance to really, you know, get growing and that kind of thing, it'll be a, I think it'll be just even more so. And again, with Brett and Tim, it's a wonderful project, and it just really enhances our city. And we appreciate all the work that was done on that. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda items for consideration. We've had a request that item one, which is the annexation and rezoning request of 125 Brock Street, to be tabled. So we will take that off. And also, the other item which was been actually presented by Jimmy Bearden will be presented tonight by Tim Paget, who is our county fire chief and EMS director. So with those changes, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda items for consideration?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any discussion, any additions, or anything else that needs to be taken off? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. Our first item then will be a rezoning.
According to our attorney, they need to vote to table item one.
Oh, okay.
You do need to formally vote.
Okay, all right. Well, we will do that then. All right, do I have a motion to table item one on the agenda? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, at this time, Mr. Brooks, will you present the rezoning request for 117 Bradley Street?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, council members. This time, I'm presenting a rezoning request by James and Victoria Griffin for .22 acres located at 117 Bradley Street. Requesting it be rezoned from C1 Central Business to M1 Light Industry. And applicants intend to convert the existing building there on that corner into a microbrewery. This was reviewed, voted on by the planning commission, and it was approved with conditions. The conditions being that light manufacturing and outdoor storage otherwise permitted in M1 is prohibited. Food trucks are prohibited, are prohibited on this site, so there will not be a conflict or a competition for the restaurants that are, that already exist downtown. And the site shall only be permitted to, permitted to operate as a microbrewery. Doing this because under the current guidelines, C1 cannot have a microbrewery. It has to be zoned like industry under the current ordinances that we have in place. It was voted 5-0 with one extension by the, the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Do I have a motion to grant the rezoning? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm glad Tim's sitting beside me. I get a little ahead of myself sometimes. Is there anybody here to speak to the request or against the request?
I'm Dwayne Hicks and Metro West Real Estate Firm here in town. And we manage the property for Toria Morgan, who represents the grandchildren trust of Ramona Johnson. And she's ecstatic about the opportunity for this to become a, a great gathering place. And I just wanted to let you guys know that she's, she's pretty stoked about it and was very excited about it. It's, this, that building's had a lot of different uses, and she's, she's been very pro in favor of this particular idea. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Sorry, who, who was that?
Her name is Toria Morgan, and she is the niece of Ramona Johnson.
Okay.
She's in charge of the Ramona Johnson grandchildren's trust, the properties that they own. And this, this building is owned by that trust.
All right, is there anyone else?
Mayor and council, Alex Griffin, or James Griffin, as posed there formally. I'll keep it short. Just want to bring something that we're passionate about to downtown. My wife and I, Victoria, she's over there. You know, when we get free time, we enjoy going to La Grange, Alpharetta, Roswell, all these towns that I think Carrollton shares a lot of similarities with, that have built up recently around craft breweries, microbreweries. And I just think that it'll give a little bit more reason for people that might not come to Carrollton. It might give some people a little more reason for tourism jaunts out here to our part of the state. And just want to bring something that we're passionate about, and hopefully a lot of people around here are passionate about, to the downtown area. I appreciate it.
All right. Haley, can you put up the architectural rendering of what they plan to do with the building?
Can I ask Mr. Griffin a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Griffin, I'm real excited about your project here, and I'm thankful that you jumped over your earlier setbacks and hung in there and found a good place to do it.
I appreciate it.
Is there a regulation about what kind of hours this establishment can be open?
As far as I know, it would, it would just follow local ordinances for, I guess, what last call would be up at the square or whatnot. I don't plan on pushing any of the limits for, it's going to be an afternoon spot. Probably during the week would be a Thursday, Friday, four to 10:00. During the weekends, probably like a 12:30 or 1:00 to 10:00 also, maybe perhaps 11:00 or so if there's an event on the AMP or a concert or something that would warrant it, given its location.
Yeah.
Right there by it. But I'm not looking to be open till 2:00 AM and be a bar scene. We will have a bar, but I wouldn't consider it a bar, per se, more of, almost like a, a coffee shop with beer, you know? So.
The drawings you provided, I think, just look great.
I appreciate it. That'll be my wife.
Congratulations. I know you put a lot of work into it.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it.
I think everybody can see the screen, what it looks like now, and then what it will look like when he's finished with renovations. Okay, is there another issue?
I just wanted to just clarify for people who, if this zoning doesn't make sense, I want to try to explain it again, and I know it's been stated once. But right now, the way the ordinance for the City of Carrollton is written, you can't have a brewery in anything except an industrial zoning. So that's why this has to be zoned industrial. We plan to change the ordinance to allow a microbrewery in C1, and then this will get zoned back to that zoning at that time. And the other little kink in it is if you have an industrial zoning, normally you can have food trucks. So that's why the stipulation to not allow food trucks there, because we don't want food trucks in downtown competing with restaurants. Restaurants struggle enough, and they pay taxes and pay water bills and garbage bills and all that. And so we don't want somebody to be able to bring a food truck in and compete with that. Whereas in a, in a normal industrial setting, you need food trucks to feed the employees. So if that, just trying to explain if that doesn't make sense to the layman. Thank you.
And to address Mr. Uglum's question, there wouldn't be any different rules or any more stringent rules that apply to a microbrewery that would not apply to the normal bar and group.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now, do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request for 117 Bradley Street from Central Business District to M1 Light Industry with the stipulations that have been stated?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Okay, Mr. Paget, he's going to talk to Resolution 05-2021, the Carroll County Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's a mouthful, Tim.
Yes, ma'am, it is. Mayor and council, this is a joint resolution with all the municipalities and the county. It's done every four years. It started in 2000, and it's a hazard mitigation plan that is wrote. Y'all have participated in the plan. It's been going on for about two years now. The federal government just has approved it and sent it back for us for local adoption. Some of the benefits that y'all have seen out of the plan in the past, and each federal disaster has money that's come back for mitigation to lessen the impact of the disasters. Benefits you've seen in the past is the concrete culverts that's over by the Carrollton High School there because they kept washing out, and eventually the federal government come back and, and decided to, part of this mitigation plan to pay for that. And also, as far as the mitigation plan, you have been able to put some generators at fire stations and stuff. So just asking that you adopt this as the other municipalities and the county will for us to stay in compliance with the federal government.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paget. I'll go ahead. Do I have a motion to grant Resolution 05-2021, the Carroll County Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or need further information on this? Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Paget.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, next is bid award for a T-grant on Alabama Street, Greenbelt Spur.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the bid for the transportation enhancement grant that we got from Georgia DOT to build a greenbelt spur from Fourth Street along the north side of Alabama Street, all the way down to the trailhead at the river. It's about .85 miles. We went to bid on this, and we were surprised that we got, even though a lot of construction costs are going up and are extremely high these days, we got prices better than we had hoped. And we had four bidders. The low bid was Integrated Construction Nobility, Inc. at $1,229,414.99. The city has a 30% matching of this project, but a lot of that we've already paid in design and easements. So we're very pleased with the price. This, we also received bids from Carl Owens, Llewellyn, and JHC Corporation. Integrated just did the project at, the bank stabilization project at the school, the city school complex, and they did a great job. So we've had a great experience with them. And frankly, these other contractors also were, were great contractors, so we would have been happy with any of them. We are recommending that you award this to Integrated Construction Nobility. And again, the price is $1,229,414.99.
Do I have a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or just further discussion?
How soon's it start?
You know, this actually has to go back to DOT for another round of approval, so it'll be a couple of months before it starts. But we have to do this before they can start the, the final piece of their process.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations, Councilman Bridges, for the addition to your district. Okay, so our next item is the bid award for Lake Carroll Park Phase One.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This project is an expansion to the existing Lake Carroll Park, and it consists of pavilions, paved parking, driveways, playground, playground equipment, a multi-use field, and walkways. It'll also include the demolition, clearing, grubbing, erosion, sediment control. Is basically, it's an upgrade to that area around the boat dock and that bathroom area. This is a brainchild of Mr. Ledbetter, and this is the first phase of that. We're very excited about the project. Again, we received five bids from Carl Owens Construction, Integrated Nobility, Brad Cole Construction, Southern Standard, and Diversified Construction. The low bid was from Carl Owens Construction, who's at $723,569. They are an excellent contractor, and we've used them many times. So we recommend that you award this project to Carl Owens Construction in that amount, $723,569. The bids ranged all the way up to 1.33 million.
Okay, do I have a motion to award the build of the, bid of the Lake Carroll Park Phase One? Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Ledbetter, your project has been awarded, and you won't have to sit on the same park benches that you did when you were a little boy.
That's right. Wow.
I think this.
Very long time ago.
I think this is going to be a great enhancement to that area, and I know a lot of people use that area. Okay, our next item of business is a vehicle purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a half-ton pickup truck in the engineering department. It was a 2007 with 170,000 miles. It was in a rear-end collision, which deployed the airbag. The truck was worn out anyway and slated to be replaced in the upcoming budget, but it did total the truck. We tried to bid this out locally and didn't get any bids, so we had to go to the state contract. We want a three-quarter ton four-wheel-drive truck this time. This was presented to you in the work session, but the, the state contract holder is Allen Vigil Ford, and the contract price is $40,615. So we asked that you approve that purchase. And before you do that, I have to tell you a funny story. I'm always bragging on Tony Richardson. I said, now, are we scrapping out the old truck? He said, well, I'm actually going to take the spray site. I got another one that doesn't work, and I'm going to put the two together and make, make one truck. So he, he's the cheapest person alive and.
Other than you.
Other than me, yeah, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the vehicle purchase for the engineering department?
I'd make a motion. Will we approve that?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, our next item of business is budget amendments for FY 2020 and 2021. Mr. Triplet?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two budget amendments that we would like to present to you for your consideration tonight. The first budget amendment, FY number 21-07, all relates to the city's. to the city's general fund totaling three-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars. This budget amendment covers re, uh, classification of employee transfers related expense, also covers, uh, budgeting, uh, for the expense related to the SPOLOST special election that was, um, held back in March, the cost of conducting that election, and also, um, funding, uh, the various building repairs and capital upgrades that are currently ongoing and planned, uh, for City Hall and funding, uh, additional, um, legal expense. So that totals three-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars. The next budget amendment is, uh, number FY twenty-one dash zero-eight, um, and that pertains to the AL-MIG, uh, Street Capital Improvement Fund. This is a special revenue fund. It is funded solely by grant revenues from the State Department of Transportation. Uh, this amendment totals three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. This is just a bookkeeping cleanup. Um, we had a little over three-hundred thousand in the current year budget, but we actually spent, uh, closer to six-hundred thousand. We've had grant money sitting, uh, in this account for two years, um, that has gone unspent, and so we, we spent it all in this year, and so, uh, we're just reflecting, uh, it's a timing and we're trying to clean our books up. And so, um, that's, that's, that's all this amendment is. So the, these, these two amendments, um, are, we're presenting to you. We may have a couple of more at the next meeting as we, uh, close the books and get ready for the auditors. Um, any questions or comments, I'll, I'll be glad to answer.
I just want to clarify on that second one. We didn't spend any more money. It was, it was state money they gave to us for paving. We used it for paving, but it was in the wrong year, so it had to be...
Yeah.
...reaccounted into this year, or we get an audit, we get a ding on our audit if we don't.
It's, and it, and that money's actually been sitting in our bank account for two years, and it's just now getting spent, so...
Nice to have grant money.
Yeah.
All right, you have the two amendments before you. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the amendments.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, while Mr. Triplet is still at the podium, we have the presentation of the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you recall, we presented the draft budget for your consideration FY twenty-two at your June meeting in accordance with the budget calendar. And Tim's already spoken a couple of comments on this, but I always like to try to, uh, make a point to speak of it as well. Um, I want to thank, um, all the department heads and superintendents for their input and their help in preparing the budget. Uh, my job is relatively easy. Um, I assemble and coordinate the numbers, drop them into the system, but they're the ones that actually develop the budget request, and more importantly, they execute their budget day in, day out for a full year. They're the ones that makes these numbers work and I want, we've all been working together, uh, for a long time and, uh, they always do a great job. And I, I personally appreciate, uh, their help and their assistance, and I want to thank them for that. As you remember from last month, the proposed FY twenty-two budget for the city's three main operating funds, our general fund, our water sewer fund, and our sanitation fund, uh, the budget totals fifty-four million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar, three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. That's a lot of numbers to say. And as Tim said, with the amendment that you just approved for the general fund, uh, the budget that you are voting on tonight is actually a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-dollar decrease, uh, from the, the final amended budget. Um, the fifty-four million, uh, dollar budget is broken down as follows. The gen, general fund, thirty million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. The water fund, eighteen million, two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And our sanitation fund, five million, six-hundred-and-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Um, without going over again what we talked about at the June meeting, um, I would just say that the, uh, all of the revenue categories for the general fund, um, have recovered very well from the pandemic. Uh, they're, they're not only stable and solid, but they're showing healthy increases, and, uh, that's a good thing, a good sign for our local economy. Um, and the same goes for our revenues in our water sewer fund and also our sanitation fund. Uh, one thing that we like to emphasize every year, as far as the general fund, this budget poses, proposes no increase in the city's millage rate for the upcoming fiscal year. On the expenditure side, for general fund, water fund, sanitation fund, this budget proposes a four-point-five percent cost of living allowance for full-time city employees. We're projecting an eight percent increase in group health insurance expense for the upcoming year, uh, calendar year for that particular item. We will get those renewal numbers around October. They will go into effect January first of next calendar year. Um, our property liability insurance, projecting a five percent increase. And in terms of dollars and cents, um, that, that equated about eighteen-thousand-dollar increase for all lines of city insurance, property liability insurance. And so, we felt like that was a very good, uh, proposal for our new, uh, for our insurance for the new year. Um, on the water fund, we have capital money budgeted, uh, just under one-point-nine-million dollars. That includes, um, uh, water sewer line upgrades and replacements, and also upgrades to our water plant and our wastewater treatment plants. Um, the other thing that I'm happy to report to you tonight, um, as you recall, in the hotel motel special revenue fund tax fund, um, we actually are proposing, uh, a budget of six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, which is a twenty-thousand-dollar decrease from the current year budget of seven-hundred-thousand. Probably in our business, all business sectors in the city, the hotel motel tax industry was the hardest one hit, uh, from the pandemic. And, um, I am very happy to report tonight, they have rebounded very strongly, and, and I'm happy for them, because I talked with some of those people during the, uh, pandemic and it was a very, um, stressful time for them. So I can say with just about absolute certainty, we're gonna meet and exceed that six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar mark, uh, by probably a good bit. So I'm very happy, um, for the hotel motel, happy for all lines of business in the city, but especially for them, because they, they were hurting there for a few months. Um, so that's basically all I have on the summary of the proposed, uh, budget for the FY twenty-two fiscal year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'd like to make another point. I'm an engineer, not an accountant, and accountants drive me crazy with things that they make us do. But that fifty-four million, of the fifty-four million, uh, if they'd book it my way, it would only be forty-five, but they won't do that. Uh, there is eight-point-seven million dollars moved from the water fund and the sanitation fund to the general fund. So it gets booked as an expense in the water and sanitation fund and gets booked again in the general fund. So that's what accountants require that we do, but to me, it's double booking it, so we're really not spending fifty-four million, we're spending forty-five million. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
We're an odd bunch of people.
Sorry. Especially you, Jim.
All right. Uh, you have the presentation and explanation of the budget, so do I have a motion to adopt the budget as presented for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, the budget is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Triplet. I have sat in your seat and, oh, I'm sorry, I, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the budget is adopted.
Thank you.
And I have sat in your seat and it's much more pleasant to sit on this side. And thank you for all your hard work, for you and your department. I know that, that's a lot of work. Um, okay, we at this time have a board appointment, item nine, for the Carrollton Visitors Bureau. We have two, is that correct, Mr. Grizzard?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, uh, position held, the at-large position is held by Judy Rowell, and the lodging position is called, is held by Christina Wood. Uh, both terms expire, June, expired June thirtieth. They would both like to be reappointed and the board, uh, recommends that they be reappointed. And again, uh, as you know, the makeup of this board, uh, specifies different people from different backgrounds. There'll be folks in the restaurant industry and again, folks in the lodging industry. But, uh, again, uh, Ms. Wood is, uh, is a lodging person and Ms. Rowell is just an at-large. But we, we ask that you reappoint those.
Okay. Do I have a motion to reappoint these two people to our, um, Carrollton Visitors Bureau?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Um, for those of you who may be new to a council meeting, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session, and this is a closed session. We're going to discuss personnel. So, um, there are actually three things that you can just, um, discuss in executive session. That's personnel, real estate, and, um, litigation. So, uh, tonight we will be discussing personnel. And so, if, um, if you would like to stay, once the executive session is over, we'll come back and adjourn this meeting, but there will not be any, um, business conducted during the executive session. Okay? So do I have a motion to, um, go into an executive session at this time? Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, and I just realized that when I introduced my university student, I don't think I said her name, it's Ms. Simone Gibson. Thank you. All right.